Good evening. Address the crowd. Hand the crowd. I call this meeting of the Prosper Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551.
Okay. We're going to go into it. So, we're going to jump down to C.
We're going to do C now?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, I'm here primarily to answer any questions you may have regarding the order calling for the election. You've gone through the process. We do need an amount within that order, and I'm not sure if you have a copy of it in your packet or if you need a copy?
I got it.
Okay. So, basically, you have the option to call for the election for May this evening, setting the amount. The money can be used for construction, renovation, equipment of school facilities, purchase of any necessary sites, purchase of school buses as necessary as well. So, it is the generic statutory language that we have that's all encompassing for what you can use bond money for if approved by the voters.
That was my question, just to make sure that whatever verbiage there is, there's, we don't inadvertently leave something unforeseen out that needed to be specifically articulated in the language. Y'all covered that completely, right?
This is as broad a language as we can use under the statute.
Okay.
That's correct. And I think the only thing we need is an amount. That's the only blank within the order itself. Well, I was just going to say-
It's the hard part, Doug. You're leaving that too.
I understand, I understand. I will point out also that we'll also be on your agenda on Monday. Monday, you will be approving an order authorizing the issuance of the remaining balance from the prior authorization, which is 200.5 million. You'll also have a small refunding that's available to you that will be a part of that order authorizing the issuance and delegating authority to the administration. So, that will exhaust, again, all of the authorization from the prior voter-approved bonds, and then those bonds will be sold and issued this spring to supplement the construction fund for all of the projects that you have going and that are underway. So, I-
How much is left?
200.5. Yes. And to the extent at that meeting you want me to brief kind of the plan of finance, I can do it tonight, I can do it at that meeting, but that will be on your agenda Monday as well, and I wanted to just give you the heads up on that.
Monday we'll be good on that. Yeah. The, uh, I know we're in, regardless of the amount that's in timeframe that students will come, doesn't necessarily align with, and you've had those discussions with us, with how much we can actually grab each year.
That's right. It's about 100 million per 1.2 billion dollars of taxable growth is kind of the number that we've taken all of these numbers and boiled it down to just something to hang your hat on. So, about 100 million per 1.2 billion of growth. Last year, you grew at a billion seven. If you go back, and one of the things that we have is we've looked at Denton and Frisco and McKinney, you go back to when they were an eight billion dollar tax-based district and how long it took them to get to 25 to 26 billion, which is about the size that we need to get to to absorb the type of bond amount approved by voters. It was, in Frisco's case, about a 10-year process. That was back 10 years ago, if you will, so the dollar value is different today, so you could get there sooner. But I'm thinking you probably need the money in about a seven-year period. Financially, we may be able to access the money in closer to a 10- to 11-year period. This will be something that we update annually as part of the Finance Committee and so forth as to how much we can pull off the shelf, if you will, and issue to keep up with the contracts and the facility needs that you have. So, roughly about 100 million per 1.2 billion dollars of taxable says valuation growth. You grew last year at 1.7, and so that could accelerate based on, you know, what we're seeing. You know, I think Frisco, for example, their average tax-based growth over the past five years has been 3.9 billion. And so, the past five years. You go back 10 years in the 2008, 2009 timeframe, there's kind of a leveling off. So, it's not been just each year, but here lately, it's been extremely high, and that's been about 3.9 billion on average per year. McKinney's average over the past five years, one-year growth has been 1.2 billion. We're probably somewhere in between the two, hence, we don't know if we're going to grow at 1.2 billion and access 100 million, or 2.4 billion and access 200 million or some number north of that. But that's kind of the numbers that we're working with.
Mr. Cunningham made the presentation, just to look at it. You know, y'all's task is to look at it one of two ways, which is address the student growth in this timeframe that's projected by 2025, and then back into that number, and however long it takes to get to that number, it takes to get to that number. We're going to have those kids by X date, 2025, or purely, that, the student enrollment would be a secondary thing and just focus on the financial lens and say, okay, we're going to do it through 2025 realistically, in the most optimistic way, we can realize X dollars probably in that timeframe and go for that number. So, there's two different ways to approach it. The committee chose to approach it through the student lens. That's where their recommendation came from in terms of, we're going to have almost 33,000 kids by 2025. That equates to X schools, so many elementarys, so many middles, so many highs, and here's that number. That was, that's what was the basis of their recommendation. So, either that's where you fall in that, looking through that lens, or through a more pure financial lens.
I thought they then pulled it back a little bit, like-
Well, they did.
Yeah.
Okay. Fair point.
They pulled it back to high school, they pulled it-
Yeah. No, they, it was around 1.6-ish, 7-ish, uh, in terms of kids during that timeframe, so they did reel it back some, just to get to-
To their 1.337.
Uh, number.
To align more with what he's saying is realistic. Somewhere in between.
There's a hybrid in there, yeah. Because then they were thinking, if we go for a 1.7, let's say, they really were got conscious about going something beyond 10 years, if, you know, reaching out that far. I mean, this is going to be promoted as, in their mind, promoted as a five-and-a-half-year bond. This is how many students we're having 2025. These are the needs. The money will be what the money is.
Right.
I mean, if we grow 3 billion or we grow, you know, 900 million, we'll get what we can get, and that's what we'll do. But the students are going to be here, and that's sort of how they attack it.
And we purposefully have to be conservative on our side.
Yeah.
They have to look at reality. We have to be conservative so that we don't get out over our skis, so to speak, financially. And so, you know, the models are good predictors for a certain period of time, but, you know, for the long-term models, we just don't know. If we're, you know, if you just looked at the numbers, you know, for example, you know, the growth for any particular one year was flat in 2010, 11, and then last year for Frisco, or the past, you know, it's 4.7 billion. So, you go from flat to 4.7 billion, that obviously changes the model we have to work with and how many bonds we can afford. In a perfect world, the student count and the tax base would be very closely aligned, and we would just march step. It doesn't work like that. But generally speaking, the commercial is going to drive it, and that is something that's starting to reach here, and I think it's coming with announcements of corporate transitions and places they're locating. So, that's what will drive our model, will be that type of tax base. Commercial tax base adds very, very quickly.
So-
I mean, obviously, our big-ticket item is high schools.
You're right. I mean, you're right.
In their projection was three more?
Two.
Just two, okay. The pullback.
They kicked out the fifth one.
Yeah.
So, it's two, which is roughly, you know, a little, on this, with escalation, they have it at 485.
The two of us.
Yeah.
Yeah. And again, we're building them so they can be essentially, even though we would like to keep the 5A model, they're going to be the same as private high school, they can handle 6A.
You're right. You're right. So, still, if, now-
But it was modeled as if they were going to be 5A? Like, when you, when we looked and said, how many schools do we need? Was that assuming they're going to be 5A?
Yeah. Yeah. But with, but to your point, we didn't want to be in a position to turn each high school into a portable village. So, I mean, we're intentionally, elementarys, it's served us well. Elementarys and middles and highs are, in many respects, overbuilt for the preferred, hoping that we sometime, at some point, circle back to the preferred, but we can weather this massive influx of students with, I would still say, minimum pain. Some parents might argue that use of that term, minimum, and teachers might too. But they've done great, great work with the numbers just on every campus. But if the winds change for whatever reason, then we're equipped with really doing nothing to have five, let's say, five, 3,000-student-ish high schools versus eight, 2,000-student, uh, 5A high schools.
And the high schools are what, 32, 34 high schools?
34, 52, I think. Next year, we'll be pushing 4,000.
But in this arrangement here, we'll have four high schools in five-and-a-half years.
Right. Yes, ma'am. Now, if the numbers come the way projected, that will have, zoning's never this clean, but average out the high school students, that puts each high school at about 24, 2500. And that's a bad place to be.
Right.
That's all small success.
I know.
So, I'm just saying, that's a bad place, that's just a bad place to be when you look at what we're going to be putting our kids up against in everything. So, you know, we either hold that if we don't have the value or whatever else, or the money to do it, then you hold that, and those all swell, and then we come back with the next round, and then start bringing all that stuff back down. But initially, that'll be tough. Just mathematically, just mathematically, it'll be tough. Now, yeah, the only thing that might make it better in some respects is if they have divisions in 6A like they do 5A, but, you know, that is what it is, that's just-
What is the breaking point for 6A again?
2190, I believe it is.
Yeah.
So, that's, just, you never want to be small in any classification. You don't want to be on the light end of any classification. We've always benefited on being on the top end of most, all the classifications.
Blame it on each other, and then you-
I say, of the four high schools, I say we have a 3A, 4A, 5A, and six mega 6A, and we will still love each other. We will never compete against each other, that's the plan, and I'm sticking with it. That's what we're doing. So, here's where, here we are. So, what are your-
More questions, comments? We need a, we need a, we need a motion to put a number out for the law. Do we have it? Well, my question is, I mean, I'm always one that says, why not go ahead for the 1.7? I mean, that's their recommendation, it doesn't mean that we have to-
No, that's right, you're right.
Everybody's into this thing now. You only have a little-
That's gone through a few generations already, so it's, yeah, I mean-
So, again, your, the concern is that due to size, it would get voted out. I mean, is there any other reason not to go? Any other reason not to go to 1.7?
That's the only reason.
That's it?
Really, the only reason is sticker shock. That the committee, at the end of the day, began to feel like there was more sticker shock with a 1.7-ish number than a 1.3.
SciFare is going for 1.7?
1.7.
1.76.
And they're 10 times as big as them? But they're not building anything new. It's all refurbished, yeah, everything else. And, if I remember right, the rates are going up.
Yeah. It is a taxing increase.
So, it's a taxing increase, so-
But what's the downside in having to do this again in five years? I mean, I guess that's what I'm thinking is-
Well, do you think the climate would let it get through now, or-
Well, that, that was part of, that was part of the committee's position too, was that the uncertainty of the new blood coming in and how they, they just believe every day that passes is a harder day to pass an election. That was pretty much their position.
That's true, we've got to go bigger than that.
Then we got to go, to me, that's what I'm saying. If it's going to get more difficult, then why do we, why wouldn't we go for as much as we could now, whenever it would be easier to pass and not have to deal with this for 10 years?
Easy's a relative term.
Because easy, and our community is living this now. Well, in the state of where we are is a very positive, I mean, relatively very, very positive. Everyone's so anxious for us to get more schools, more, you know, everything's very positive, it just, the tide could turn unfortunately to me in five years. I mean, hopefully, we'd be-
Well, the, realistically, to his point that he made, realistically, even at the 1.337, we would, it would be amazing, but highly unlikely for us to get there by 2025 in terms of capacity. Students, yes, but in terms, so in reality-
But that's on conservative number.
Yeah, but, but-
Well, I mean, we're growing at 1.3, 1.4 billion, that has to, that has to really more than double for us to grab the number that it needs to happen each year for us to keep up with this onslaught of growth. That could happen, hey, Whataburger's awesome, but we need more value than that. I mean, you know, you look at, you hear the numbers that he spits out regarding Frisco, and they are putting in just massive-
Billion dollars.
Massive horizons.
Crazy things, and we, and we thankfully have Roadhouse.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's just, so it's just, it's just not here yet to that movement. So, it realistically will bleed to seven, eight years, and that's even being, he probably is thinking more conservatively, more conservatively than that. So, that's, that's sort of where it came funneled down to this number for them.
Yeah, the other challenge before you is, is when your student counts pick a number 15, 20%, that tends to precede the commercial that comes with it. So, then when it goes from 15 to 20%, it may be 10%, that's when the taxable values percentage gets higher. So, those are the challenges that you have before you, but it's going to take time to absorb that, that kind of size, if you will.
And every discussion right now at the state level would work against the numbers that he's talking about with caps, with the 2.5% cap, you know, cap increase on existing value. So, they're trying to win elections and do everything and not make sense of the numbers in Austin, but it's, what they're, what they're talking about in Austin now is not friendly to our issues right now in terms of fast growth.
Yeah, if it bleeds over to the debt service side, the voted bond side, any cap on appraised value or any of that would be devastating to a district like this, being able to meet the needs of your students and your parents to have spaces for their children to go to school.
Right.
Except for we have a lot of new, I mean, new stuff coming in.
It would impact us maybe less than other districts because the lion's share of our world is new.
Right.
But, you know, the very next year, it's existing, so I mean, it's just, but it would, it would, it certainly wouldn't help our cause. If they put something like that in place, it would, for, I mean, for everybody here, I'm sure the values of your homes went up more than 2.5%. So, philosophically, I'm all in, but they need to make up the difference of loss on the other side.
They said they will.
I'll tell you what, so, that's where we are.
So, we left off high school five.
Yeah.
What else was left off without list? Was it a?
I think a middle.
Middle.
A middle. Those were the two biggest ticket items. Now, and, and we, the way it will be communicated is, look, this is, this is all based on projections, but we will reserve the right to insert a facility based on where the growth's coming and everything else. We're not, we're not bound to anything that the committee articulated. It's all covered in the language that he's talking about. And we did that, you know, we want to reserve the right, we might need another elementary instead of a this, or a that, instead of, you know, it's just, you can't, we're not going to be able to go, oh, well, we need to insert a 250-million-dollar high school. That money's just not going to be there unless you make a conscious decision to say, we're not going to build three elementaries and a middle and insert that.
I don't know if that's slow, I mean, you don't know where it's-
You're right. That would be a-
Yeah, we slowed in the center and the first.
It'd be, it'd be a great day, see you.
Yeah. It was a slow, I mean, we have, we're such small activities.
We might, we might slow to like 12%.
Yeah.
The other thing that we're doing with that model is we're not extending beyond. Sometimes we'll have, if you've got a five-year debt issuance plan, for example, we'll use 10 years' worth of growth in our taxable value. What we're trying to do is use the growth each and every year for what you're issuing each and every year, so that when you absorb what you approve this time, and the next committee is together, and the next board is together, they're not looking that this bond took up everything else that's to come from there. So, from that perspective, it's still a conservative approach to it, but I think it's also protective of the next generation of facility study and needs and-
That's the only way we can look at it. Given where we are in our growth, I appreciate that approach on your side.
Yeah.
Because we reached too far, then we're really cutting our nose off to spot our face on the future growth part.
Right.
So, that's good.
I just don't know, constituents would see much of it between 1.4 and 1.7. I mean, I know it's 300 million, but- I don't think they would, but I tend to value the process they want to go up with that number. That's, that, I mean, we have those people go through this and have these discussions over and over again, and I'd like to support their work.
I think him, yeah, he's confirmed that I feel comfortable with what his conservative approach is to it as well. I think this is more of a realistic number.
I mean, it's humorous that we're talking about a conservative approach of 1.337 billion, you know, but it, you know, it's given this perfect storm that we're in, it really, it is really taking a lower position on the number. But I, I tend to see that agree with-
But really, I'm not. I've always kind of been, the thing that I see is having to be 6A more than we'd like to be. Just because that's the generalities, so.
Yeah.
And we'll have that choice.
Yeah.
If we have control over it, the zoning can play out however we see best, but-
I think you're handling that part perfectly, I really do, because it's if the winds change, we're, we aren't so far down a path. Now, after this one, there's a decision to be made. I mean, really, with regard to that, because that'll be the next round of high schools. So, at that point, you certainly will have to draw a line in the sand and say, this is what we're going to be when we grow up.
Yeah, that's right.
But that's not where we are. We know where we want to be right now, but we're not bound to it even through this one. Yeah. All right.
So, we're at the door for it, and you do the 1.337.
I, I think we should do exactly what they said.
1.337? Is that a motion by somebody?
I think the motion.
Okay.
Second endeavor.
I want to say it though.
All in favor?
1 billion.
More discussion?
337 billion dollars. Should we have that set?
What? It's billion.
1 billion, 337 billion.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion, we have a second, we even more discussion? All in favor? Thank you to the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Widd. See you Monday.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll go ahead and slide into, Miss, Lesley's here with Huckabee and going to sort of outline some do's and don'ts for us, now that you've called the election, and that's in your handouts too. I think it's the title, do's and don'ts.
That's right. So, congratulations on calling an election. So, you are now officially in campaign mode, so we definitely need to have a good understanding of what you can and can't do throughout this process. So, about 15 years ago, I was a teacher and a coach in a school district a little southwest of here, and all of a sudden, I noticed I started getting all of these emails from the school district, and it was showing like, you know, some buildings that needed repairs and some things that were out of date, and I had a public relations background, and I was kind of like, okay, well, why are they sending us all of this stuff? What are we going to do about it? So, I started asking some questions, and my school leaders were like, well, there's nothing we can do about it, they just failed a bond election. I'm like, well, why are they now showing us how bad everything is and how crowded everything is? Like, isn't it a little too late? And so, it was really interesting. I was new to Texas, new to public education in Texas, and so I found it very interesting that they had just failed a bond, and then they decided to communicate about it, because what I learned is they were scared to death to talk about it. They thought because of election laws and that you couldn't advocate for or against, that you couldn't talk about it, and that's not at all the case. So, I don't want you to feel like that, that your hands are tied that much. You certainly should be talking about what's proposed for your community, and I would argue that your community expects to hear from you about what's included. You just can't tell them how to vote. So, with all that being said, I will now take you through some boring slides, as you will be putting out probably some boring information, because all you'll be able to talk about is facts. So, we're going to take a look at the Texas Election Code. You've got your do's and don'ts handout, and then we'll talk a little bit about your role as a board member in your official capacity compared to your role as a private citizen. So, the election code, Section 255.003, basically states that an officer or an employee of a political subdivision, in your case, the school district, you guys cannot spend money or authorize spending for political advertising. Political advertising is anything that advocates a particular outcome. So, again, you can't advocate for a yes vote or for a no vote, and that includes anything that you say, so statements made orally or anything that you put in writing, anything that's on social media, anything, that is how political advertising is defined. So, basically, what this means is you can educate, you can't advocate, and you can share facts, and I would hope you are sharing facts all day long, but you can't share your opinion. But keep in mind, this applies to your time and resources while you're serving in your official capacity. So, right now, you, again, are in election mode, you've just called it. So, tonight, any other statement you make about the bond election need to be simply facts. So, something like, we are expecting this many students, our projections show, you know, we're going to have 33,000 students in however many years, the bond election is for 1.337 billion dollars. Things you could not say are, we really need this, we're going to have a ton of kids coming, and what are we going to do if this doesn't pass? Those are all advocating, but you can share how many kids are coming, you can share what you would do, you would build schools, you're going to prioritize based on number of students and where it is geographically, so you can share facts, you just can't insert your opinions about how much you need it or what are you going to do without it, kind of thing.
Is, is like Mary Lou Smith at a dinner, a dinner party of five people allowed to say what she wants to say?
She's not in her official capacity at that point.
It's only, only when we're aboard.
When you're here, or I would say if you're attending a school function in your role as a board member. You know, if there is an upcoming award ceremony, you're there as a board member, you're in your official capacity. Yep, so.
Neighborhood meeting that was called for purposes of education related to this, you would be, and you were invited to talk, you would be in a capacity.
If you live in that neighborhood and you would normally talk to your neighbors, I would say you're a private citizen.
Okay.
Now, if they advertise it as we have a school board member, Mr. Davenport gonna talk to us, then they have put you in your official capacity, but you can still share facts. You can still go and talk about it. And again, you can't direct a district employee to create political advertising. So let's say, while you're at your neighborhood HOA meeting where you live and where you normally talk to your neighbors, someone presents something to you that they've created that says, hey, you guys should vote yes, because we're gonna be able to get rid of all the portables if we vote yes, and you think, oh, I like this. Oh, you know what? I meant to make copies for everybody, but I forgot, I show up to a board meeting, hey, will you guys go make some copies? No, 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 you can't do that. You've just asked an employee to use district resources to advocate. So in your role as a board member, there are lots of things you can do. I wanted to include this slide so that you see, again, I don't want you to feel like the district where I worked fifteen years ago and they were too afraid to say anything. Um, you can share facts about the election itself, you can share facts about growth, you can share facts about the tax rate. Um, from everything I've heard, there will not be a tax increase associated with this bond, you're already at a dollar sixty-seven? You can share that information with people. Um, those are the facts. Um, you can go out and speak to community groups in your role as a board member, and you can distribute materials produced by the district. So I think you have, uh, some drafts of things the district was considering putting out. Um, if those are all true projects that you're looking at, you have every right to, you know, have those copies and pass them out, because it is factual information. And of course, you could encourage residents to vote, you just can't tell them how to vote. Which leads us into the, what you cannot do, can't tell them how to vote. Um, you can't use your district, district issued device to advocate for or against the bond, so if you have a district iPad, a Chromebook, a laptop of some sort, um, and let's say someone invites you to join a social media page that is advocating for the outcome, you should not use your district device to be on that social media page. Um, and I don't wanna sound scary, but I would not be surprised if there's not some open records request associated with your bond election at some point to check for these sort of things. Um, at the dollar amount that you've called and the political climate that we're in, um, I think it's likely that you would see some attention. And people looking to get you, right? Looking to catch you doing something. Um, and again, they also, you can't use slogans or taglines. So in all of the district material that's put out, again, it just needs to be factual, you can't say, come grow with us, you know? Come build your future. Um, those are considered political advertising.
Can you say, we are prosper, since we use that on everything?
If you use it on everything, then I would argue yes, because that is something you've consistently done. Yep, now.
Are you gonna talk about Facebook and social media in more detail?
Sure, we can.
I just, can be curious, I mean, there's gonna be things flying all over there, liking a page.
Yes, so as a private citizen, you can like whatever page you wish, you just need to do it on the devices that you personally own, so your own cellphone, your own home computer, laptop, things like that. But yes, you are, now, I would caution you, um, if your board meeting starts at six, I wouldn't like something at six oh two while you're in, even if, let's say, you know something happened and y'all got started a few minutes late, if you had a board meeting called for six o'clock, people are gonna assume you're in official capacity as a board member, I would not. So I, I would be cognizant of those kind of things, and that's what I would advise to your teachers too, even they ha- they have, you know, an off-period duty-free lunch, those kind of things, that's not the time to be getting on social media, that needs to be clearly way before school, clearly way after school, way after their duty. If they're a coach, and you know, they're at a game, they're still on duty, they need to do any of those type of things. When there would not be any scrutiny, I mean, you just don't wanna give people a reason to.
That's good advice.
You know, point the finger at you. Um, so yeah, so what you can't do in your official capacity is link to websites or social media pages advocating a particular outcome. So let's say, again, a social media page is created for people supporting the bond, and you say, oh, well, that would be nice to link to from the board page of the Prosper I C D website. No, you can't do that. So you may be.
What extent can we, even as a district?
Mm-hmm.
Say, basically say to the misinformation, liar, liar, pencil fire, and state the facts. You, you, you know, can you say, that's not accurate, this is da, 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 da.
Absolutely.
Is that acceptable i- in, in my capacity and a board member's capacity?
Absolutely. If all you're doing is correcting facts and you're saying, here are the facts, but you've just gotta be careful about your tone and emphasis and the words you use, um, you know, you probably wouldn't wanna say something like.
So you might wanna say, to be accurate, ba, 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 ba.
Yes, mm-hmm. Um, just this past election cycle, I saw super, there was a lot of misinformation about, um, the percentage of debt that was gonna go up, and so I actually saw superintendent do a Facebook Live, he was a former math teacher, so he stood there at a whiteboard and, and did the math for everybody and showed them how the, the math that the district was putting out was the correct math, not the math put out by some other group that was saying, oh, no, this is a hundred-something percent increase or something, so yes, that, that is one way they chose to kind of debunk the, but other times it's smaller information, and yes, you can just comment back. So there are a handful of employees in here, so you might be wondering, what are their roles? They're the same as yours. Again, it's any district official. Same list, pretty much, for district employees. So here are some potential ethics violations, so again, slogans, building a better future for our kids, tone and emphasis. So we have seen cases across the state where someone has even said, the fact that you underline or boldface a word, um, makes it now suddenly political advertising, because you're advocating. Even like that last statement, that last statement is factual, correct? The tax rate will not increase, but the fact that it's will not increase, now it becomes more advertising as opposed to just factual, the tax rate will not increase. So I, I know it's crazy, I kind of, um, relate this for me as, um, you know, if you're on a road trip, and speed limit's like sixty-five, and then all of a sudden you're about to come to a small town, and it goes fifty-five, then it goes to forty-five, and it's real easy, right? You don't mean to keep going sixty-five or sixty-three or sixty-two, but you might. It's gonna be hard for you, you've gotta really like pay attention, because just like there might be that small-town police officer sitting there with his radar, there are gonna be people sitting and waiting for you and watching to see if you actually slowed down to forty-five and thirty-five, and follow all of these little rules. So you can do it, right? You can, you can slow it down, you can say the tax rate will not increase with a straight face, no emphasis, no exclamation mark. You can do it, it's a fact. You can.
I think they can.
And, and you know what? That is an excellent idea. You should practice, because it's gonna be in your nature to be passionate about what you need and how you guys have planned for the future, and how the two thousand and seven bond was a success, and how you guys built additional schools with the savings, and you chose not to build an administration building. You're gonna be passionate, you're gonna wanna share these feel-good stories. You definitely wanna tell your story, you just probably need to tell it in a little more boring way. I almost think of it too as, um, the difference between like your beautiful annual reports you put out and, um, the legal posting for a board meeting. Those look pretty different, right? Here's your legally required posting, meeting's gonna be at six P M. at this location, here is what's on the agenda. They look boring, right? But it's facts. That's kind of how you need to think of the bond, you need to tell people the information, but you just need to keep it just the facts.
If your end of meeting, does it protect you at all to say, these comments are, my comments as a citizen, not in my official capacity as a board member?
Yes, I mean, I think if you're not in this room, you're not a school function. Absolutely, I mean, you are a private citizen, but it's certainly, maybe if it makes you feel better and kind of lay the, 'cause someone could say, wait, I didn't think you were allowed, 'cause there will be people out there who are paying attention to ethics laws, and again, looking for someone to slip up, so you can say, hey, guys, I'm a resident, I'm here, I mean, I would not be wearing your badge, right? 'Cause then all of a sudden, you've made yourself a, you've put yourself in that official capacity, but I do think that kind of helps to say, guys, I'm just here, I'm a prosper parent myself, I'm a taxpayer, and this is why I think we need this. So you may be wondering, what is, what's the actual cost of an ethics violation, right? Like, what happens if you accidentally slip up and forget to slow down to thirty-five miles an hour? Um, it can't, it is a class A misdemeanor, which comes with it some fines, but really usually the bigger deal is it's negative publicity for your district, because even if it's something, if all you did was underline a word and someone called you out on it, the newspaper headline is gonna read, Prosper School Board Violates Campaign E- or Violates Election Ethics. It's not gonna say, oh, they accidentally underlined a word. So you don't want that negative publicity, 'cause all of a sudden, that will completely distract from the informational campaign and the voter cam- outreach campaign that the district will be doing. So that's really kind of the cost of a violation. But again, you should share factual information, kind of what I talked about, you should be out as a school district, um, and even if, you know, some of you as board members wanna go in your official capacity to, um, give presentations to community groups, to HOAs. As a district, you guys can send emails to parents and staff, you can, I would recommend you send a news release to the media so that they're hearing the information from you. Um, 'cause if you don't tell your story, someone else is, and you don't know what they're gonna make up when they tell the story. Um, you can do videos, you can do your two-minute drill. Um, you can have a website, you can post information on your website, you can share on social media, you can have printed materials, you can send things home with kids, there's lots of ways you can communicate it, you just have to stick to the facts. And we've kind of talked about this, some different facts you can share. And some people may say, well, how did you come up with this one billion, three hundred and thirty-seven million? You can talk about the committee process. Well, we, there was a committee that was formed who looked at it. The committee felt there was a need. That's a fact, you didn't say you needed the committee, felt there was a need. Um, and again, lots of different facts you can share. But you can, um, express your opinion of the bond use, on your own time, using your own resources. I don't want you to feel afraid to ever talk about it and, um, to ever kind of share with your close friends and neighbors how you feel about it. So this beautiful little document is a brochure put out by the Texas Ethics Commission. So I pulled out, um, a little statement there for you, it says, again, just to remind you, although you may not use school district resources for political advertising, you are free to campaign for or against a proposition on your own time and with your own resources. So again, the State Ethics Commission is giving you permission, when you're not in your official capacity, to be a normal human being and talk about things that matter to you. So, some examples of things you could do. Emphasis on your own time, emphasis on your own res- using your own resources. You can have a sign in your yard. You can speak at community meetings. You can write a letter to the editor. I would just make sure you sign it with your name and address, not a mention of your role as on the school board. Um, and you can join a political action committee if you were so inclined to do so.
The same with community, do you want, wouldn't want it to be advertised as, amazed Davenport, school board member is gonna be presenting?
Right, but even if it is, if that's how it gets advertised, I would still encourage you to go and talk about it, just stick to the facts. Yeah. 'Cause you never know, there could be someone in the audience who, and there's gonna be people in the audience that goes, oh, no, I'm against this, and there might be people in the audience that says, oh, no, here's why we need it, and, and they can share opinions, and you don't have to feel like those opinions aren't getting shared, you, but you just stick to the facts. Yeah, so I wouldn't discourage you to say, oh, no, they've only invited me as a board member. I would encourage you to get out and, and still tell the story of your growth, and tell the story of there's no tax rate increase.
But if, if, let, let's say Shuttle Creek was doing, and they were gonna advertise it, maybe you don't tell them not to advertise it as a school board member's coming.
Yeah, or when you accept it.
And I can go as a citizen.
Yeah, when you accept the invitation, say, I'll accept the invitation a- as a private citizen. I prefer not to do this in my official board capacity.
Right, yeah.
Yep. Yep. Yes.
So if our superintendent is invited to an HOA, he's still the superintendent of schools, so you just stick to the facts.
Stick to the facts, mm-hmm.
Maybe it's okay to hand out materials?
Absolutely, mm-hmm.
These are informational type materials?
Those kind of materials, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Not, not, not materials from the pack, but these kinds of materials.
These type of things, this is okay, I mean, it's just stating facts.
Yep.
This little thing would be okay, these are really good resources.
Yep, and I think those were created, um, so you guys had something handy in case someone asks you, well, how many elementary schools did they think? And again, it may change, right, depending on how your growth, but you're thinking, this is what the money's earmarked for. Any other questions about social media or? You feel a little more comfortable about that? Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. We are going to slide into the back to continue with the rest of the training.
So, so we, we're gonna break for executive session, just the meeting's over.
Well, we'll, we'll finish training back there. Okay, this is, started the training, we'll keep doing training, these are, they're all.